The things we do, all right. The things we do.
Don't get them. It's like.
There you go, that's right. All right.
I gave the college.
I'm very happy about.
I want to tell them.
I'm.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Good.
Jocelyn?
Oh.
How are you?
Good. Your family's good?
Good.
Good.
I'm good.
We do have a quorum, it's been noted, we'll go ahead and please rise, say the pledge for the October 26th City Council meeting.
Oh, November, yes, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation's government, indivisible, liberate, and just as far.
I wish it was October. And I can even publicly congratulate Jocelyn Vare for winning at the election, I don't know if Sam DeLong is here, but congratulations. Okay, any other announcements to make? See none? Proclamations. Who's got a beard that would like to read? Eric, you want to read about Movember?
I pretty much asked for that.
Yes.
Should be on. All right. You're good.
Okay, whereas the global charity Movember Foundation's vision is to have an everlasting impact on the face of men's health, and whereas the City of Fishers is committed to raising awareness about men's health, men's health issues and their effect on fathers, sons, brothers, uncles, and husbands across Fishers in the world, and whereas the City of Fishers encourages its residents to talk about their mental health.
And take the stigma-free Fishers pledge, commit to a stigma-free culture.
And whereas Building and Refuge seeks to assist men in Fishers in creating a community of support for those struggling with addiction, suicide, depression, anger, and anxiety, and will host its final Movember event December 1st. And whereas during this month, Movember encourages men to grow a mustache for 30 days to commit to move in an effort to promote and raise awareness of prostate cancer, testicular cancer, mental health, suicide prevention, and whereas together we can start conversations about men's health, raise much-needed funds for research and projects, and dedicate themselves to the appreciation of mustachery. Therefore, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim Movember as Movember Month in the City of Fishers, and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
That was an important announcement, thank you Eric. David's going to read the next one about Small Business Saturday.
Okay, whereas the City of Fisher celebrates our local small business and contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States, they represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017, and whereas small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 94% of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make in their community, and whereas 92% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long, sorry, and whereas 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants that they have not been to before or would have not been to otherwise tried, whereas the City of Fisher supports our local business community, boosts our local commu- boost our local economy, sorry, and preserve our communities, whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, therefore I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Fishers.
Thank you David.
A lot of stats.
So we have four presentations, first Brad Beaver, President of the Hamilton County Council. Joined by Rick McKinnon.
Good evening, City of Fishers, I am Brad Beaver, I'm the President of the County Council this year, with me is Rick McKinnon, he's Vice President, he'll be President next year, I have no particular item to bring to you, I've, this year as being President, I've tried to get around to all the cities and towns in Hamilton County, and I'm going to stop here and see you guys, I'll be over in Carmel next week, and that'll pretty much wrap it up. I just wanted to come and represent the Council to you, I see, I've seen you at our grand opening, our groundbreaking a few months ago and whatnot, but just to see who we are and go out in the community and see the other councils and how they do their business. I don't have anything in particular, basically a goodwill tour, we're here, and open for business just like you are every month, we meet first Wednesday of every month at seven o'clock, so if you ever want to come on up to Noblesville, we'll be conducting business up there. I would say the only thing that I have to say to the Fisher Town Council and the Mayor is that we're excited and anxious about our 37 project, we're excited to get it going, we're anxious to, the problems we'll run into, we're, as a council, we're kind of anxious about the cost when it gets done, there's nothing we can do about it now, we're committed, you're committed, so we'll get the bulldozers going and then deal with it as it turns up. Rick, do you have anything you want to say?
We all know, we were all involved in roads and building lots of infrastructure, and to add what Brad just said, we have spent and allocated almost $3 million for engineering for 146 in Allisonville, that has not been fully funded yet, the price tag for that is $36 million, of which the county is receiving $9 million federal funds, but in addition to, you know, all the roads we do and everything like that, Brad and I and the rest of the Council approved $3.5 million two months ago as a capital gift to the Humane Society that's going to be located in Fishers, and so the Commissioners agreed with that, and I believe they just signed the agreement yesterday, or that was it.
Yeah.
But again, we want to let you know that we are very interested in Fishers and willing to partner with you on various projects, so thank you.
Thanks guys. Thank you, thank you for your support.
One thing I would remind you, I know Mayor Fadness knows this, our form of government doesn't function the same way as yours, we meet the first Wednesday of the month, the Commissioners are other part of our body, they meet at lunchtime twice, or at noon, twice during the day, during the month, so I would just, as we go forward, if there's something you want the Council to know, or funding issue whatnot, realize we do not receive information at the same time as you guys do, if it's coming to the Council, it comes at seven o'clock at night, if it's going to the Commissioners, it comes in during the day, so if there's something we didn't know, just keep that in mind.
Let me ask while you're up there, are there any questions of Brad or Rick from the Council?
Great.
I figured you'd ask about a bridge or something.
Yeah, we're big into bridges.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thanks a lot, thanks for having us. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Only small pieces.
Is there a presentation tonight for HS each year? I don't see anybody.
Is there anyone here from HS each year?
Hooray for.
Okay.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Next is Riverside Intermediate, is there a presentation there, someone leading that? Okay, very good.
This would be a tough night to have their blog, I mean it's right now.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah. They may have gotten the date crossed. Okay, then there are 20-year service awards, Chief?
Good evening, Steven Russafar, Chief, we're blessed tonight to celebrate 20 years of service, a generation of service of Brian Reeves.
Brian, would you come forward? Brian's here with his wife Shannon, their 13-year-old daughter Addison, and his mom Carolyn, come on, come on up everybody, there's going to be pictures, come on. There we go. Allow me to brag on Brian for a couple minutes, in 1999, obviously, Brian was hired, and shortly thereafter, in 2001, he was named Fire Department Member of the Year, in 2002, he was promoted to Lieutenant, in 2002 and in 2003, he received unit accommodations for rescue work on calls, and in 2012, he received the Department Medal of Merit for his work in the Training Division. Late in 2014, he returned to school at Columbia Southern University, in 2016, he was invited to join the National Society of Leadership and Success, the, the NSLS is the nation's largest leadership honor society, in 2019, he graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree in occupational safety and health, magna cum laude with honors, and we're here tonight to honor a generation of service, nights away from his family. Brian is a quiet leader, values in, a lot of organizations have values, ours are honesty, integrity, professionalism, and accountability, and Brian is one of those quiet leaders that sits in the firehouse and watches, is impatient, and listens, and when the train's about to leave the tracks, he gently puts it back on, so I'm grateful for his leadership, his dedication to service, and especially to his family, please give us a round of applause for Brian. Thank you Brian for your service.
It's like, live PD.
Chief? Chief, do you have another? Oh, nope, we're good. Oh, okay. Thank you Chief.
You're very welcome.
Finance Committee report, John?
Certainly Rich, thank you very much, some items for, that were recommended for approval for this evening's Council meeting by the Finance Committee, item on the consent agenda, item 6D, E, F, and G, on the budget financial, item 11, request approval resolution for municipal equipment lease purchase, and item 12, authorizing bonds for various road projects. In addition, a presentation was made that we're very proud of in the Budget Finance Committee by our, our independent audit firm, BKD, that did an actual audit for our organization, as some of you may be aware, about three or four years ago, we made the decision to break away from the State Board of Accounts and actually have an independent CPA firm audit our financial statements, and I'm pleased to report today that we rendered a clean opinion on those audited financial statements, which is a phenomenal task when you consider we converted software during the year in 2018, and we ended up rendering a clean opinion on the financial statements as a whole, very proud of Lisa Bradford and her team in the Controller's Office, they continue to impress me with not only their level of work, but their integrity in that process, so very proud of the things that they've done for this community and being good stewards of our financial situation.
Thank you John. Moving to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve unless there's any items that need to be pulled.
Second. I think we're all, all the items are before us, is that correct Chris? Okay, motion by Pete, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item 7, R112619H, Megan.
Good evening, Council, for the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development for the City of Fishers, my first item tonight is the resolution, for the declaratory resolution for the Hub and Spoke Project, if you'll recall, in November of 2018, City Council approved the project agreement that included a real property tax abatement for this project, this is the 85,000 square foot design center that's under construction right now, if you drive along 106th Street, this is the first step as the declaratory resolution, designating this as an economic revitalization area, and then next month, we will come back asking for the approval of the confirmatory resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Megan, by Council?
Motion to approve.
I want to.
Sorry.
Are we suspending the rules or not?
Nope. Oh, is it, no, there doesn't need to rerule suspension on this one, no.
This is a declaratory resolution.
Okay.
It'll come back next, next month, right, for a confirmatory resolution afterwards, Selena.
Is that clear? Okay, motion made by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, very good, thank you. Megan, your next one, R112619H.
Again, for the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development, this is the statement of benefits approval that we're requesting tonight for Cytel Operating Center, this was approved at Council last month where we announced that Cytel was going to be setting up shop in the former Jarden office space off of 121st Street, hiring 300 jobs, and as part of our incentive package to them, we had offered a five-year, 100% personal property tax abatement, so this property has already been designated as an ERA, so this is the final step for their abatement approval, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Pete, second by Eric.
And I will just say that Cytel is, is not taking their time, and they're already making their presence felt in that, in that area of town.
So again, this is a case that we heard before, this is the final step, is that the second as well? Second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion carries, thank you. Last one, R112619J.
Again, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development, this is a request to approve the First Amendment to the project agreement with CRG and Browning Investments for their Northside project, named the Nickel Plate Station, they have requested that they extend their closing deadline from December 31st of this year to April 30th of 2020, just to accommodate for some additional unexpected delays in the design process, no concerns there, and we've also, because this project is so closely tied into the trail construction, we've also added trail construction obligation language in this agreement to make sure that there's no impacts on the trail construction as part of any sort of delay on their part. Happy to answer any questions?
Just no questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
All right, motion by Pete, second by Selena, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And all abstain.
One abstention by David? All right, motion passes. Moving along to item 10, item 112619A.
Good evening, Council, for the record, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources, here before you to propose an amendment to the 2020 salary ordinance, the first part of this amendment would update the biweekly maximums for all positions with the 3% increase, which was already approved for, from the 2020 salary, or budget, second part of this ordinance amendment would be adding the title of Records Quality Assurance Tech in the Police Department, this position would create a new headcount, but again, was approved as part of the 2020 budget already, and the last part of this amendment would be to change the title of Property Room Officer to Property Room Manager, and move that up a grade due to the increase in its responsibilities and duties, again, in the Police Department. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you Ethan, I know this is, if we're going to hear this case, someone will have to make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules unless there's any questions for Ethan.
Questions for Ethan?
I'll second it.
No, Selena?
No.
Okay, all right, motion to suspend the rules is by Pete, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 112619D, municipal lease purchase.
Good evening, Beth Hampshire, Deputy Controller, we'd like to request the approval of the resolution for the 2020 municipal equipment lease purchase, the city solicited bids for the 2020 equipment lease and received five responses, key government finance was selected as the lowest and most responsive bidder, the interest rate for this lease loan will be 1.94%, and we're requesting that the Council approve to proceed with key government finance. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I did one, have one question, what, what do you estimate the savings to be for the benefit of the public?
Um, let me pull my stuff, I don't know if we have an estimate of savings for this one.
All, all the bids were incredibly competitive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a municipal lease, they're all going to be within a stone's throw, I mean.
Right.
I saw it was like 1.9 or?
It was 1.9, that was the lowest interest rate.
But because it was a public bid, they also have to take the lowest, most responsive bidder, and really, we're into a formality now, they've got to do the lease, so.
Yep.
Anyway, John made the motion, I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Pete, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 112619, item 12.
This is the ordinance, the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Fishers of Indiana authorizing issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to pay for the capital improvements of various concrete and road projects, neighborhood road repairs and reconstruction, and incidental expenses and connections therewithin on account of the issuance of the bonds. This bond was discussed and built into our 2020 budget, it's a one-year property tax levied bond, the main use will be for concrete road repairs, predominantly in our Burberry Park neighborhood, the concrete road repairs should use up all the, all the money available in the bond, we don't, there is no need to hold a public hearing, and we ask the Council to suspend, suspend the rules and have the first, second, and third reading, and pass so that the city can close the bond before December 31st this year.
Chris, is there any reason for a public hearing on this?
There is a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So let's, let's, let's hold the public hearing first, and then if there are any questions, we can go ahead and suspend the rules.
Thank you. All right, so if there are members of the public who wish to speak, if you would raise your hand, you'll be called before the mic, and please state your name and address for the record, yes ma'am? Do you have, you wish to speak on this matter?
No.
Okay, all right, are there any members wishing to speak on this matter? Well, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Now I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? No?
Make, 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 motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, okay, motion carries. Thank you.
I think these next three, Rich, or at least the next two, from what I can tell, are voluntary annexation, so Tony, I'm going to try to save you some more care, since this is the third readings of both, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 13, the voluntary annexation of Kelly Woods.
So that's item 13 and 14?
No, one at a time, I get yelled at by my attorney if I do them two at a time.
All right, second that. All right, second by Pete, I'm sorry, motion by Pete, second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I'm going to make a motion to approve item 14, which is the voluntary annexation of, what do we call that, 131st Street West of North Britton Drive and Davis Annexation, I guess.
Second. Motion by Pete, second by David, again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good, motion carries. Thank you Pete.
Thank you.
Item 15, 112619B, request to consider rezone of three lots on River Oak Lane.
Yeah, good evening, Tony Bagato, Director of Planning, this item is a rezone of three lots that we believe was zoned in our air incorrectly on the map, it's, they're zoned open space, but the residential properties, the whole neighborhood's zoned R5, and we had a resident call because they were trying to refinance, and the bank told them they can't refinance an open space lot because our zoning doesn't allow home on it, so we found an old map that showed there was a drainage overlay, and we think when the overlay was removed, they'd somehow designated these open space, so we went to Plan Commission and had them recommend approval, and no concerns from the public, and we're here to ask for your approval. Final reading?
So essentially, we got a cleanup.
Correct.
Yeah. There's no questions for Tony on this, I know it went to Planning Commission just fine without any issues, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Now I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Now I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. Thank you Ethan.
Thank you Ethan.
Item 11, R112619D, municipal lease purchase.
Good evening, Beth Hampshire, Deputy Controller, we'd like to request the approval of the resolution for the 2020 municipal equipment lease purchase, the city solicited bids for the 2020 equipment lease and received five responses, key government finance was selected as the lowest and most responsive bidder, the interest rate for this lease loan will be 1.94%, and we're requesting that the Council approve to proceed with key government finance. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I did one, have one question, what, what do you estimate the savings to be for the benefit of the public?
Um, let me pull my stuff, I don't know if we have an estimate of savings for this one.
All, all the bids were incredibly competitive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one's.
I know. They're all going to be within a stone's throw, I mean.
Right.
I saw it was like 1.9 or?
It was 1.9, that was the lowest interest rate.
But because it was a public bid, they also have to take the lowest, most responsive bidder, and really, we're into a formality now, they've got to do the lease, so.
Yep.
Yep.
John made the motion, I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Pete, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 112619, item 12.
This is the ordinance, the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Fishers of Indiana authorizing the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to pay for the capital improvements of various concrete and road projects, neighborhood road repairs and reconstruction, and incidental expenses and connections therewithin on account of the issuance of the bonds. This bond was discussed and built into our 2020 budget, it's a one-year property tax levied bond, the main use will be for concrete road repairs, predominantly in our Burberry Park neighborhood, the concrete road repairs should use up all the, all the money available in the bond, we don't, there is no need to hold a public hearing, and we ask the Council to suspend, suspend the rules and have the first, second, and third reading, and pass so that the city can close the bond before December 31st this year.
Chris, is there any reason for a public hearing on this?
There is a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So let's, let's, let's hold the public hearing first, and then if there are any questions, we can go ahead and suspend the rules.
Thank you. All right, so if there are members of the public who wish to speak, if you would raise your hand, you'll be called before the mic, and please state your name and address for the record, yes ma'am? Do you have, you wish to speak on this matter?
No.
Okay, all right, are there any members wishing to speak on this matter? Well, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
And now I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? No?
Make, 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 motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, okay, motion carries. Thank you.
I think these next three, Rich, or at least the next two, from what I can tell, are voluntary annexation, so Tony, I'm going to try to save you some more care, since this is the third readings of both, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 13, the voluntary annexation of Kelly Woods.
So that's item 13 and 14?
No, one at a time, I get yelled at by my attorney if I do them two at a time.
All right, second that. All right, second by Pete, I'm sorry, motion by Pete, second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And now I'm going to make a motion to approve item 14, which is the voluntary annexation of, what do we call that, 131st Street West of North Britton Drive and Davis Annexation, I guess.
Second. Motion by Pete, second by David, again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good, motion carries. Thank you Pete.
Thank you.
Item 15, 112619B, request to consider rezone of three lots on River Oak Lane.
Yeah, good evening, Tony Bagato, Director of Planning, this item is a rezone of three lots that we believe was zoned in our air incorrectly on the map, it's, they're zoned open space, but the residential properties, the whole neighborhood's zoned R5, and we had a resident call because they were trying to refinance, and the bank told them they can't refinance an open space lot because our zoning doesn't allow home on it, so we found an old map that showed there was a drainage overlay, and we think when the overlay was removed, they'd somehow designated these open space, so we went to Plan Commission and had them recommend approval, and no concerns from the public, and we're here to ask for your approval. Final reading?
So essentially, we got a cleanup.
Correct.
Yeah. There's no questions for Tony on this, I know it went to Planning Commission just fine without any issues, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Pete, second by Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Tony. Yeah. Item sixteen, any unfinished or new business? No? Wow. Okay, item seventeen is community comment, I don't know ma'am if you wish to speak, but if there are other members who wish to speak, you'll be given three minutes, if you again would state your name and address for the record, you can come forward ma'am.
Amanda Goldner, one one five two seven Charleston Parkway, and I would like to know what the current plans for the development on Maple Street, in South one hundred and fifteenth street, and what the buffer is going to be between Charleston Crossing, and I couldn't find it on the website, so.
Great question, there currently are no immediate plans for development at this time, those properties were purchased by a developer, and they're working through different items, but, and Tony, I don't know if you can speak to, I don't believe the Maple Dell subdivision, is that in the current downtown overlay? So, so what I would recommend after the meeting concludes, if you could touch base with Tony, our planning director, he can tell you all the rules and regulations that are currently put in place that they'd have to adhere to, under the current zoning, and then there might be some additional changes as well, but Tony, if we could connect, then we could get you up to speed on what the current rules are associated with that land, if that works, thank you.
Thank you mayor and Tony. Any other members of the community wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the community comment.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Motion, motion adjourned by Pete, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wow. That might have been a.